Good evening, the time is 7:02. I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening all. Starting off tonight, points of pride. Superintendent.
So in case you have not seen this news, Cindy Hodgson was awarded the American Association of Teachers of German National Outstanding German Educator Award, which is the highest award given by that organization. Also PES had their open house last week, spread over three nights, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Students and staff were thrilled to share their work, classroom, and school again. DCL, DCS welcomed artist Mark Ringneys and Jeanne Connolly to guide them in creating flags. These were used for creating an outdoor structure to display their hopes and dreams. And then finally at Hancock, HES continues to deepen their sense of community through weekly whole school closing circles. It is such fun to hear the students' celebrations and reflections at the end of each day. And those are our points of pride.
Thank you, Superintendent. With that, we are on to our first period of public comment. So the standard disclaimers do apply here. Public comment period is not a question and answer format. In general, the board will not respond to questions asked. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the board. And please remain civil at all times or you may be ruled out of order. With that, if there's any member of the public that would like to address the board, please signify by raising your hand. I will call on you. You can come up and address the board. You'll have two minutes to do so. Who you are, where you're from. And then make sure you push the button and the mic will go green. Thank you.
My name's Jeff King. Live at 165 Old Dublin Road in Peterborough. I have two sons. My oldest, Aiden, is a 17-year-old senior at Conville High School. My younger son, Kieran, is a 14-year-old freshman at Conville High School. They've both been playing hockey since they were three years old. And they're very hopeful that there will be a hockey season this year for the boys. We understand that there's no coach yet. And just wanted to be here to let you know that the parents are out there, the kids are out there. It is important to us. This will be the last chance that my sons will have to play together. And you know, it's my older son's senior season. He lost his season last year, as did the rest of the boys. It would be a travesty to not be able to offer them a season. So I hope that every effort will be made to find a coach for the team. There are people out there that would certainly appreciate it. It's a small but passionate community. And quite frankly, this may very well be the last season there is due to the numbers. So we'd rather go out with a bang than a whimper. So I certainly hope the board will do everything it can to ensure that there's a season this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Make sure the light is green and then who you are and where you're from.
My name's Alyssa and I'm from Peterborough. I wanted to start by saying the meeting at Conville was a great success and I hope we can do more like that in the future. I really appreciated it. I truly felt like that night you guys were really attentive and actually cared for what we had to say. And I really appreciate every single one of you coming to the meeting and taking the time to do so. That being said, I know you guys think masks are great and that you think they're really working. But if that is true, why are the kids still getting the virus? They, as well as myself, and I'm sure most of you, are not properly trained to wear them. We all touch our mask in faces, we remove it to take sips of our drinks, or even itch our face. These are all things we do and I've seen done in this room tonight. Unless these kids and staff are trained in wearing these masks correctly, it is truly pointless for them to be covered. And honestly, it's doing more damage than it is good. My son cried this morning at drop-off. We held up the line because he didn't want to go to school. He didn't want to wear a mask. In his words, "We're fine. I'll be brave and I'll just go." That is so mentally damaging to these kids. It's truly heartbreaking. Maybe it's time we try not wearing them or having it be a choice like the CDC recommends. And again, I truly appreciate all you guys do for our students and our staff. It is not an easy job and I understand that. But please stick to caring for their education and leave these medical choices to us as their parents and our doctors. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board tonight? Make sure the light's green and then who you are and where you're from.
My name is Heather Rag and I live in Peterborough. I am the president of the Hockey Boosters for the Boys. And so I'm here as well to support and just let you know that we are here and we do want to move forward with this season. Hopefully you guys can help us make that happen. And my son is a senior, in his senior year, playing hockey. He's been playing since he was a youth as well. And my daughter plays as well, so she'll play with the girls. But we just want you to know that we are here and hopefully we can get the support because the communication has not been there. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to make public comment tonight? At this point, there'll be another public comment period. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We will move on to our next topic, which is non-public, which we do have this evening. So we do need to go into non-public. Dean, right, for legal. Jim, did you have a second one? Legal or negotiations? Negotiations? Okay. Do you want to do that at the end?
Yeah.
Can we do that at the end or do you need to have that happen first? Okay, fine. So with that, I would entertain a motion to enter non-public for legal and negotiation.
I move that we enter into non-public under RSA 91-a colon 3, Roman numeral 2, for legal and negotiations.
I second. Moved by Catherine, second by Greg. Tim? Dick? Dick. Okay, with that, we're into non-public.
Okay, we are now back out of non-public.
I move that we seal the minutes for negotiations for 10 years.
Move by Janine, second by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I move that we seal the minutes for legal for 10 years.
Move by Janine, second by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. The minutes for both are sealed for a period of 10 years. Thank you all. With that, we are on to the consent agenda. There are two items in your consent, or three items, I guess, in your consent agenda. First are the minutes from October 5th. Next is a retirement notice for Jenna Moncrief, a music teacher. And second, or the third item is the co-curriculars that are attached. Any objections to the consent agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. With that, I will reserve comment that I too hope we can find a solution to making sure there is a boys' ice hockey season this year.
We need a coach. We need a coach. So that is what we're waiting on.
Okay.
That is the only issue at this point. We have ice. We have, we need a coach.
Okay, so noted. If you know a coach, send him our way, or her our way. Great, thank you. With that, superintendent's report and presentation of business. Yes.
So, let's start with reopening update, as I'm sure you're aware, and I'm going to put some data up for you.
Oh, we lost Ellen. Bye, Ellen.
So, let me, we did, we did go over 500, and I believe we were at 504, so I can give you a little bit of an update on that. As you can see here, this is our most up-to-date data. We do still track it. We do not track on weekends, not because we don't want to, but because the state is not updating on the weekends. So, you can see that right now in our district, in our district towns, we have 45 cases. That's actually down over the last week from kind of an average of about 60. Vaccination rates by towns, you can see that there, as well as you can see vaccination rate for 12- to 19-year-olds. And that has also not changed a whole lot. Again, that's 12- to 19-year-olds. That's not necessarily our students, not all 12- to 19-year-olds in our district come to our schools. And then finally, you can see here where we are, I'll put it, where we are for our greater Manonah Public Health Region, which is at actually 507. In Cheshire, there's 251 cases. So, Cheshire County is Keene and all the way over to Dublin. Hillsborough County, there's 1,210 cases without Manchester and Nashua. So, most of our towns are in Hillsborough. There's actually 535 cases. On the state level, there's 4,400, a little over 4,400 cases, and presently 178 state hospitalizations. I think most importantly for us is we look at these numbers too, and this tells us how many, about how many cases are positivity in, you know, and also our pediatrics. So, that doesn't mean that other people, that people don't go outside our, our Manonah pediatrics, for the pediatric services, but it gives us a good idea of what's going on. This is our data for our students in general, as far as quarantining across the districts. So, these are the number of students who either have a sibling that's been exposed, or have someone in their household, or are in a situation where they're waiting for a test. Below that are the students out sick. You can see that it's not tremendously different, but that, those are not students who are out sick with COVID. Every year, we have students who are out sick because they have allergies, or they have a headache. So, these are the students out sick. And then finally, this is our staff. And again, these are staff that are out sick for any reason, may or may not be COVID-related. And in those quarantine numbers, just to be really clear, that is, that, that is the information. We also include staff in those, those numbers. So, that is our information as far as data is concerned. I didn't total it up.
There wasn't one.
I didn't total it up. It's 94. Oh, that was the sixth, sorry. So, this morning, because we went over that 500 number, we did have a conversation with the COVID monitoring team to see if there was going to be changes in their recommendations. And as you know from the plan, we look at a number of things. We don't just look at the number 500. 500 was, is kind of that place where we start the conversation. And what the COVID monitoring team recommends at this point, particularly because we're only a day over 500, this is the first time we've been over 500, is that we continue to monitor. Keep in mind, we send a letter home. I know many of you received that letter. It was so nice last week not to have to send a lot of them. We send a letter home whenever with the number of cases we have in any given day. In the last week, we have had four positive cases across our 11 buildings. We have 45 cases in the, in, in our towns. And so, for those reasons, I, they're pretty much feeling like we just need to stay the course, continue to watch carefully, and continue our mitigation strategies, and keep moving forward. So, that's where we are. So, right now, there's no recommendation in or change from the COVID monitoring team.
Dr. Olman?
Dr.
There seems to be significant inter-town variation in the proportion of 12- to 19-year-olds who've been vaccinated. In, in our hometown of Antrim, only 26% apparently have been vaccinated in the 12- to 19-year-old cohort. In Dublin, it was over 70%. I don't know whether that calls for pop-up vaccination centers in Antrim, or what it, what it does, but it's really quite surprising to see that amount of variability among the nine towns.
So, we are work, we have been working to do, do another vaccination clinic locally. There was a little miscommunication during the Columbus Day weekend. We thought they were coming the day after, was the 18th? No, that was this Monday. Last Tuesday, the 14th, the 12th. But they, that didn't work out, so we are in conversations to try to do that.
They can tell you, I get, I'm one of their volunteers. They continually have been having pop-ups in, in the region. There was one in Francis Town, or two in Francis Town, one in Jaffrey. So, they are scheduled in this general area. I can tell you only because I've been tracking the numbers, even after the pop-up in Francis Town, the number, at least that's reported on the state dashboard, barely moved. Rich?
We have a lot of statistics, greater variability in smaller populations. So, you would expect greater variability in the smallest towns, probably, so I'm not to worry about that. But I am worried about something we actually heard at the community forum. And I'm wondering if there is a way, possibly with additional testing, to shorten the quarantine period for kids who have been exposed but not infected.
So, we, one of the other things we're looking at is what does it take to actually start to do? So, there's two different types of testing, and we've talked about the SAS, which is asymptomatic random testing, and that was not something that the board felt that they wanted to pursue. What some other districts have started to pursue, and we've started to look into, is what would it mean if we did symptomatic testing? So, in other words, a child comes in and is symptomatic, then we would perform a rapid test, and they could either go in, or they would be going home. We think that, and this conversation is something I've, I've had with the vent, some, a couple of vendors, trying to get some understanding. It's not quite as cut and dry as just getting tests, because there's two things. One, we have to become an actual certified site. Two, we need a vendor that's willing to manage the paperwork part of it, because it's quite intense. And then three, we actually have to find a way to get the actual tests, which is not as easy as, as just like ordering them online. So, so those are the three things that we're looking at right now.
Hold on. Rich, follow-up and then Janine.
So, I would probably defer to the MD on the board, but my understanding from both the COVID monitoring team, as well as talking to the vendors, is that the only asymptomatic test that can be used is the PCR. Dr. Kribel, I don't know if you would, is that, is that accurate?
That is a correct statement.
Okay. So, and, and that is the, that we would not be able to, even with the, being a certified site, my understanding is we could not become certified to do a PCR. It's a separate, is that?
I'm not asking whether the district could do anything. If, if I have a kid who's at home with no symptoms because his sister had a positive test, can I get that kid tested? It would be on me. Can I get that kid tested, a PCR test or whatever it takes, and then have them go back to school rather than quarantining? There was, there have been a few articles out on it recently with headlines like "Test to Return," or things like that. You know, can, is there a way to shut, to, to constrict the quarantine time? One of the things we heard in the public forum was a woman who represented, at least that her, you know, her kids were out for 30 days because they sequentially had to quarantine for 10 days at a time.
That is something that has come up on the COVID monitoring team. We have not found a solution to, to that particular problem quite yet. Because what, so COVID tends to roll through a family. And again, not that type of doctor, but it, so what happens is once, one student gets it, three or four days later, the next student is positive in three or four days. And what happens is because of the quarantine period and the household contact piece, students are having to quarantine longer than, if they all just got it at the same time. So, I don't have an answer to your question. I'll certainly dig in and try and have something by the next time, and hopefully, the board is going to maybe give me a thumbs up that I should continue looking at asymptomatic testing until I can maybe come with a solution, or should I not waste my, I'm symptomatic testing? Or should I not be wasting my time? I just need a, like, sign from the board to either continue or not.
Any objection?
No.
None. How about it? Janine?
Um, Rich actually asked like question.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Sorry.
So, then my final kind of
Yes, I saw it as a yes, in response to that question.
Okay. So, I should continue?
Yes, that would be, unless there's an objection to how the chair received that.
So, then finally, just if, in case you didn't notice, tents are starting to come down. So, as the wind picks up and the temperatures go down, we do need to make sure that we're able to take the tents down. Because for instance, we, those ropes and ratchet straps, some of them have to repli, be replaced. So, we want to, safety is at the forefront of that decision. And that is my update on reopening, unless there's more questions.
Any other questions? Okay, monthly calendar.
All right, the monthly calendar. This is the week of the 18th. Is there anything else strategic planned needs to be done?
At 6:00.
6 o'clock, week of the 25th?
I will be there, Dr. Olman.
We can talk about that. So, I, Dr. Forrest is wanting me to remind the board that I will not be here, starting on the 23rd. And I will return the 1st of November, and that I won't, that you'll need to call her. Not really, but all right, the week of, the, the first week in November? The second week in November? The second week in November? Don't forget about the budget session on the 6th. This is a good time to let you know that we will not be able to have your budget books ready before that Saturday. So you will not be receiving them until that Saturday. The week of the 8th? The week of the 15th? And then the week of the 22nd? And the 30th, there's an equity meeting. And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you, superintendent. Okay, with that, we are on to report. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Catherine, and then Greg. Oh, sorry, Catherine.
Oh, I just have a request at our budget workshop on the 6th of November, that in light that we won't have the materials in advance, which is fine, that we will not be asked to take any votes or make any decisions at that meeting.
I'm willing to recognize that as the chair. Okay. Onto reports. Teachers' representative. Do we have a teachers' representative here tonight? Sure? No. Okay. Budget and property, Jim. Make sure you're live.
Couple items of interest. First of all, you probably can't see anything now, but by next week, if I remember Tim's notes, you'll see a crane at the high school. They're going to start to install the solar equipment. We've actually had people mobilizing, and some of the materials started to arrive. So the program, the project is moving forward. We spent most of the time talking about the capital improvement plan. Hopefully, we will have the plan updated and posted on the Budget and Property Committee website in advance of the meeting. So you can get a look at that prior to that Saturday morning. Some of the items of interest that were discussed, it's quite a length, where one is, you're going to see the parking light issue come up again. And the other one we're going to talk about is, we've talked about it, the community forum is the athletic field, what to do about them. And what we talked about there is getting the facts and the different options together to present in a cohesive manner to the board and to the public, so that we're not, we're all operating with real facts and real costs, okay? That's all I want to say about that right now. I guess that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Communications committee, Janine.
Tonight, we, Thursday night, we spent some time wrapping up the community forum information. We decided that we would probably limit the presentations to two or three, because obviously, people prepared and they didn't have time to present. The format will be the same, except we'll do a better job of managing. The questions and answers will identify specific time slots for each of the presentations, and then make sure that the questions and answers, if they go beyond that time slot, they can, we'll move it to the second hour, where people can continue to ask questions about that particular presentation. We're looking for a little more. We're thinking maybe the school board would like to have a little more engagement. The logistics, as far as logistics go, there won't be any babysitting next time, because the people who asked for babysitting did not show up. So we're planning on sending out some thank yous, a letter to the editor and the, the letter to the editor in the Monad Neck ledger, but also provide you, for your local newsletters, a thank you to the community for showing up and engaging. And Guilfoyle will also do a press release of a thank you to the community. The next forum will be in late January, before the deliberative session. It will, obviously, will do work on the budget, informing the public about the budget and getting some input from the public. And it will also be about preschool, Ben. So we'll present some information on preschool to the community. We talked about doing a piece to put out into the public about our lawsuit, to remind the public about what the lawsuit is and give an update, and also the connection to the education freedom accounts as far as the funding goes and what they have to do with each other. But we will rely on some legal advice from Michael as well. Talk to Michael. Kimberly is going to talk to Michael about that. As far as reopening status, we thought the public, it would be good for the public to know about what's going on with our reopening plan. And the COVID dashboard will be going back up. And when it does, Kimberly will work with Guilfoyle to put out a press release. We thought it would be a good idea to inform the public about the solar project, the progress on the solar project. Also, a Guilfoyle press release, and maybe once that press release is gone, hopefully, the ledger will want to do a piece on that. And Jim will be restarting his series on the budget and is thinking about what subject areas he wants to do and what changes he needs to do to his pieces, and referring people back to that. And we're thinking that he also, one of the pieces he wants to do is after the tax bills are finalized, to inform the public about that. Did I miss anything, Jim, about the budget? And also Guilfoyle has videos planned.
Thank you, Janine. With that, education, Dr. Omen.
We met yesterday from about 5:30 to 6:45 in time for everyone to see the first pitch. Incidentally, the cheaters from the former Confederate state, apparently in the bottom of the first inning, ahead 1 to nothing. During our meeting, we discussed summer programs with the help of Amy Yannick, whose formal title, I believe, is Director of Learning Recovery. And she told us about programs directed at all three levels of instruction. Students were partially selected on the basis of how they had done on NWEA tests. And then, at each, at the elementary level, programs of intense tutoring, five-week programs of intense tutoring developed for young people learning phonics. For the, in the middle school, there was a five-week intensive tutoring program focusing on fractions and decimals. In the high school, the learning recovery program seemed to focus on American government and some social studies topics. We, I guess my only concern about what we had tried last year, and it was rushed, and it was very difficult to prepare, is it just how scalable, as people in business would say, these efforts, which worrying that smaller groups might be in the future? We also had a short discussion about the health curriculum, especially for grades 5 through 8. And then we ended off with a short discussion about alternative options to formal school coursework. So it was, it was a busy, incidentally, it is terrific on the education committee to have people present who are actually professional educators. Enough said. Thank you.
You absolutely can. Only if you unmute.
When the, I'm unmuted. When you receive these reports on the various learning recovery programs underway, is there, was there any report about the numbers? The numbers of participants?
Yes, there were numbers. They were not huge. I believe with the elementary school, there were actually just nine, help me out here, Dick Dunning, and nine students. And what were there, 18 at the middle school level? Kevin, just so you know.
At the middle school, there were, I believe, 18. And at the high school, there were 66 students.
Which was a little different kettle of fish for reasons we could get into.
And at the high school, there were, Amy shared the example of the social studies class as an example, but there were a number of classes. There were, I think there were 10 different courses, 10 to 13 courses that were offered during the summer for students.
Sorry, Liz.
I am just wondering what the plan is for learning recovery in the smaller elementary schools.
The answer is, I don't know. I think that this was, this was a rushed job. It was effectively carried out, but, you know, we're going to have some time to think about. Remember, we were at one point contemplating a $1.25 million summer program. And then, as a board, we decided we just don't have enough time to plan that learning recovery. But clearly, students have suffered with the interruptions in styles of instruction, et cetera. So I think some serious planning, Dr. Forrest, is, needs to take place before we mount a program this coming summer.
What we're hoping to do is to replicate the programming that we offer in Title I schools, because that has been successful. We need to do that in a way that we're not supplanting the Title I programming, but we're supplementing it. So there wasn't, given the timeline, we weren't able to put together that programming. But we wanted to offer something during the summer, and that's why we went with the high-intensity tutoring. So we are moving forward with developing plans. We did share some concerns around staffing. But yes, our hope is, with the time to plan, that we'll have higher participation this coming summer. Thank you.
Catherine.
So thank you, Dr. Omen. And this might not have been discussed in your meeting. It seems like it was a report out on the summer program. So this question might be more directed at Dr. Forrest and Dr. Saunders. What is the current learning recovery plan at each level? How many children? What types of programs?
So I will have Amy come on November 2nd, if that's the wish of the board, to go over all of what's going on and how those programs are being implemented. So November 2nd, is that as part of the superintendent's report?
Yep. We'll add an agenda item. We'll add the agenda item for the November 2nd meeting under the superintendent's report.
Well, and I just want to share, the Ed Committee, learning recovery, the learning recovery program is scheduled to be a part of every Ed Committee, a regular update. Although I did.
Great. Okay. Policy committee, Catherine Heck.
So the policy committee met this evening. Tonight, before you, you'll see the second read of Policy DN, School Property Disposal Procedure, and Policy CBI, the Evaluation of the Superintendent and Goal Setting, and the procedure for that policy, which is a board policy for the board to follow, has nothing to do with the superintendent as, in that capacity. We have a robust and the biggest legal update that we've seen to date. So we are actively working through that. So we are going to be bringing before you Policy IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Material for a First Read. Policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. Policy, and forgive me, but it's almost like I have to sing it. EA, no, EEA, I can't even do it. EEA. I mean, it really has to be a song, which is mandatory drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and contracted carriers. In addition, we will have a small amendment to Policy IMC, Controversial Speakers and Programs, which will be more of a procedure that we would like to add just a sentence about, also coming for a first read. And our agenda continues to be extremely packed, but we are working through it as diligently as we can. And the administration and the staff, when they need input, is working through them as fast as possible as well to make sure they're correct and meet the needs of the district, the students and the staff, and the taxpayers, depending on the type of policy. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your efforts for those. Any questions for the policy? Okay. Old Business Legislative Update. I haven't, there's 200-some-odd LSRs that'll directly impact this district in some way if they turn into bills. I haven't, are the Senate done yet? No, right? Okay. And so as those get turned into draft bills, we'll continue to monitor them and advise you as we go through them. Catherine, hold on, and then, go ahead.
So I just wanted to update you. I think this is the appropriate time, because it's legislative. I'm your New Hampshire School Board delegate. I went to the meeting.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Adopting resolutions. And essentially, they are going to continue to advocate on the policy positions that protect local control, that protect school funding, that are good for students. I mean, the same types of things they've been continuing to advocate for. They are a staff of four people, the smallest school board association in the country. And their workload is ever-increasing. But we took, as a delegation, steps to ensure that they continue to advocate for what's best for each of our SAUs, I guess you would call it that, because we are not, some of ours are cooperative, some are single-school districts. And they are really working hard to make the suggestions, changes of advocacy needed, so that some of these LSRs don't come to pass.
Thank you for the update. Sorry, sure. Fair enough, thank you. So that's a Legislative Service Request is that acronym. And so when a legislature wants to file a bill, they file an LSR that then staff work with them to actually draft up the legislation itself. So right now, if you go on the House website, you'll see there's hundreds of them. There's about 200 that impact districts. And usually, it'll only have a title and potentially an RSA reference. Those will eventually get turned into draft bills. So right now, we're at the title and citation phase. Very brief, but even some of them, it's almost just the title. It's not usually much beyond a title at this point on many of them. You can usually discern what it's about based on that title. But, and who's asking for it? Because it gives you the legislator in question that has submitted it. So those are just the House ones. I haven't even begun to look at the others, even if, thank you very much. And we'll keep you posted, as does the NHSBA, do a good job of tracking those for us as well. Okay. That's all we have on that. So tonight, for policy, we have two second reads for adoption. The first is DN, that is School Properties Disposal.
I move that we adopt Policy DN, School Properties Disposal, as submitted.
Second.
Move by Janine, second by Greg. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of adopting Policy DN, School Properties Disposal? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The policy is adopted. The next is Policy CBI/AFB, Superintendent Evaluation.
I move that we adopt Policy CBI/AFB, Evaluation of the Superintendent and Goal Setting, as submitted.
Several seconds, I heard Jerry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The policy is adopted as presented. Next, we are on to the Expenditure and Incumbents Report. Lori.
Okay, the packet includes the summary and details for lines, some items to bring to your attention. There is a budget transfer that we'll discuss next that cleans up the salary and FICA lines. There is a budget transfer that we'll discuss next that cleans up the salary and FICA lines. Then for the line for pupil services, if you'll recall, when we went through budget season, we had moved $197,298 out of our budget with the intent to cover those costs from the trust. We are going to need to do that. We need to hold a public hearing. We've also had some additional needs come to light, so we are pretty over budget in that line item. So I guess I'm looking for direction. Do we want to tap into the trust for the deficiency, the full 481, or just the 197, and ride it out and see how the year's fleshing out? So that's the direction, some direction that I'm going to need. We have $106,000 in the budget, well, in our expenditures that are encumbered, that were not included in the budget because we've removed all mitigation factors for remote learning. So we are going to have further discussions to see what our options are with the companies and if we can continue to own the devices without payments. So that line, I don't want to make any move on that yet because we might be able to reduce the encumbrance on that. Then, an additional item during budget season, we discussed the need for purchasing a truck for the facility department. And we moved $42,000 out of the budget with the intent to cover that purchase through trust. We have looked into it, and the truck is actually going to cost $46,000, but we need to have a public hearing to be able to address that as well.
So I want to make sure I heard a request for two public hearings. One for the $197,000.
One for the SPED trust.
One for the SPED trust and one for the equipment trust.
We can go ahead and schedule those.
Yep.
Hey, thank you.
Catherine.
May I ask, under Object Code 530, the first line, a note, fiscal note C, when you talk about this, you made a comment that this might move out of the budget, is that due to the grants that are possible under getting hotspots that you've been applying for? Or is that, am I misunderstanding?
We are not sure that, given the direction that the state's going and such, we're not sure that we would have the option for remote learning. So if that isn't an option, then we wouldn't need to have, incur the expense. And if we do need to incur expense, we would look into seeing if we can add it to any of the other money. It would not tie into, well, actually, we are also looking to see if it could tie into the E rate, the.
Yeah, that grant. Okay. Thank you very much.
Dr. Alman.
Lori, I'm trying to draw your attention to what looks like wonderful moves to make there. It appears that we need this FED, or encumbered for future spending, $5.4 million. Is there some money that's going to go back to the pound? What's going to be?
So.
Do you want me to answer it? It's where we are in the process right now. I promise, we are going to use much of those dollars. It's just where we are in the encumbrance process. Sorry. I'm sorry. At least I did it in October and not May.
Rich.
Lori, could you further explain what it was you said you needed guidance on?
Okay, so if we look at our pupil service line, we're currently, we are anticipating being over budget by just under $500,000. And this is due to additional needs that arose after our budget was created. Of that amount, we already planned on taking just under $200,000 out of the trust to cover costs. That leaves $281,000 that we need to either decide, do we want to take it from the trust? Do I have permission to do, request a budget transfer and reappropriate some funds within the budget? Or do we want to wait and see later in the year where we have funds available?
So, Rich. By agreeing to hold a public hearing for 197, did we answer that question?
I mean, I think, the request I heard was to hold a public hearing. If we do that and put it at 197, then that is the answer to that question, and then the rest of it would have to come from within the budget. So, I mean, that would, that's how I heard the request.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to come from within the budget. It could still come from trust, but later in the year.
But later in the year, correct. We could wait and see how it comes out, and we could hold a second public hearing. Kimberly.
So I just want to be really clear that this was not an over expenditure, these were, these were groups of students or students that we did not anticipate having in the district who have moved into the district, and we are responsible for their services. So I just want to be really clear that that's what this is.
Understood. So, so I, so as, I will ask if there's anybody else that has an opinion on that relative to the public hearing for the 197 from the trust, and then seeing where we are at a later point and making those decisions then. Any objection to that approach? None? Great.
And that gives spectrum.
That's correct. And then the other request was the $46,000 from the equipment trust to cover the truck. Those are the two requests for public hearings? Sorry, what? Oh, sorry, Jim. Sorry.
If you look at the trust fund summary that we reviewed in the last budget and property session, if we take the $197,000 out, we will still have $630,000 left at the end of the fiscal year, and our target is 500. So just put it perspective, it looks like there's money in the trust fund if you want to do that. So when we have the public hearing, we'll have the updated numbers for you.
Thank you, Jim. Lori, and yes, Kevin, that's exactly what that trust fund is for.
So, based on what I'm hearing now, I just want to reinforce the idea that, or the understanding that this line will continue to show as being over budget, and that explanation will continue to be provided.
Thank you. I think we understand that. And then with Jim's information there, we know that we have some available if we need to go down that route from that trust. With that, I would entertain a motion to accept the Expenditure and Encumbrance Report.
I move that we accept the Expenditure and Encumbrance Report as presented.
Move by Catherine, second by Jim. Additional discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of accepting the Expenditure and Encumbrance Report?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Expenditure and encumbrance report is adopted. Budget transfers, Lori.
Okay, I think the first and the third are fairly self-explanatory. The middle one, I am asking for a little bit of latitude. We have historically, well, over the last two or three years, we've been working on a project to properly allocate benefits to building levels. So last year, what we did for a budget, we had, the project wasn't tidied up yet. And so what we did for the budget for this year is we budgeted at levels. So there was an elementary middle and then the high. And this year, I've been able to actually run our actual numbers based on very specific detail and data. So I'd like to clean up the budget and shift things around. And while doing that, I'm also going to clear out some of the items that were under-budgeted.
Thank you for that explanation. The building level data is most appreciated. Jim?
Yes, I didn't cover it in the Budget and Property Committee report, but one of the things we did do is we asked Kimberly and Lori if in January, they could, Lori could present an update to the board in terms of exactly what can we allocate by school and what can't we. So that's coming in January after we get through the budget numbers and vote, okay?
Thank you. Rich.
I move we adopt, or move we approve the budget transfers as presented.
Move by Rich, second by Kevin. Additional discussion. Catherine.
I just don't see the balance of Object Code 390 presented in the last line of the budget transfers, just to match up where we are at in the budget with that, Lori.
So the budget transfer is to address the $100,000 allocation by the board.
Oh, I was just looking for the balance of the line.
Yeah. So it hasn't been encumbered yet. It's to be available.
Okay.
As we need it, as we find tutors.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of approving the budget transfers as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Approved? Thank you. Next is to accept a gift or donation. This is from the Dublin Consolidated School, Request Authorization to Accept from the Dublin Community Foundation, a check valued at $2,025 for the purpose of the spring NHDI residency for students.
I move that we accept this donation with gratitude for $2,025 from Dublin Community Foundation for the purpose of a spring NHDI residency. It's a great program. Thank you.
Second.
Move by Catherine, second by Dick. Discussion. All in favor of accepting with thanks?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Thank you very much to the Dublin Community Foundation. With that, any other, any other issues the board wants to bring up before we move to public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. We have moved to the second period of public comment on our agenda. If you have not already spoken to the board, you may raise your hand and be recognized at this time for a period of two minutes. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment that has not already done so? Hearing none, seeing none. We have moved past that. We are on to the approval of manifests.
Okay, I certify that the manifests totaling $2,583,841.76 have been reviewed by me and found to be proper charges against Kentucky Valley School District for goods and/or services received and have been properly processed prior to their submittal to the school board.
I move we accept the manifest as presented.
Second.
Move by Dick, second by Jim. Discussion. All in favor of approving the manifests? Opposed? Abstained. The manifest is adopted. We have no other non-public session tonight. Last call for anything we haven't discussed yet from the board. Hearing none, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Move by Dick.
Second.
Second by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night. Go Sox.